Call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Beech?
Here.
Bickus Neal?
Here.
Phillipo's?
Here.
Harvey here. Kenders?
Here.
McLaren?
Here.
Nogi?
Here.
Novacek?
Here.
Ulander?
Here.
A public comment on agenda items only.
We have no public comment this evening that was submitted.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Under Superintendent's report this evening, we have some congratulations. I want to congratulate Marla for Sure for building social skills at a distance for $331.48. This included 10 portable lap desks and six cushions to use as centers to stay socially distanced while working in the classrooms. I also want to congratulate the following bowlers who attended the WPIBL individual championships. Connor McCurdy was awarded a second team WPIBL plaque and Jason Roush was awarded a high game award. I also want to congratulate Connor McCurdy and Jason Roush. They both qualified for the regionals to be held on Friday, March 5th. I do not have an update as far as how they did there, but I will find that out for the board for the next meeting. I want to congratulate Walt Vinaski and Emma Geist. They both qualified for the Whipple Rifle Tournament. Walter Vinaski represented Yawk at that tournament. I also want to congratulate the following students for being selected as February Cougars of the Month. In grade five, Ethan Yuvon and Brody Vodanish, Dominic Cause and Maya Broadwater. In grade six, Kylie Fisher, Joseph Bibby, Gabe Shakowsky and William Huber. In grade seven, Natalie Karns and Addie Kunkel, Hayden Hizzy and Jayden Golding. And for grade eight, Reese Wheaton, Colin Casper, Abby Zara and Alex Zucker. So congratulations to those students. I do not have any informational items this evening, and we do have two presentations from Mr. Meyer with regard to the budget performance report and the construction fund update. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. In regards to the revenue budget performance report, I just want to review a few of the tax collections for the year to date. With real estate tax collections, we did finalize all the reports. And as far as the delinquents turned over to the county, that totaled about 881,000. As far as the collections, on a normal budget year, we usually collect about 93.5% of what's eligible to collect. But because of COVID, we budgeted this year for 91.5% of the collections. And we did collect all, like 91.07%, or we were $34,000 less of what we anticipated for the 2021 school year. I think it's worth noting that, again, we adjusted that collection rate down by 2% or reduced the amount that was collectible by about 233,000. So it did come in right near budget. In regards to earned income tax collection, on a normal tax year, we usually collect about $1,770,000. And we budgeted to collect $1,483,000 or 14% less. To date, we're about 2.8% of what we budgeted for, $46,000 greater than we had anticipated at this time of the year. And again, I want to note that because of COVID, we did adjust the collections for earned income tax down by about 14%. So when you factor that in, when you look at this time last year versus this year, we're still earned income tax wise, we're about $220,000 behind. And again, we made that adjustment because of unemployment in the area, people's ability to pay taxes and because of the whole pandemic. So overall, on paper, when you look at the budget performance report for revenue, we are trending very, very well budget actually. But when you go back, factor out COVID, we are a little bit behind where we were a year ago with our real estate and our earned income tax collections. As far as the state revenue under the pension subsidy, that payment of roughly $675,000 is scheduled to be received at the district next week on March 16th. And one of the things I will do for next month is I will present at the Budget Finance Committee meeting on the 17th, budget transfers to show how much additional grant money, revenue and expenditures that we're going to be pulling into the budget this year because of the various types of errors, COVID pandemic grants that the district has been awarded that we have been pulling down on. As far as the expenses, again, the expenses, everything is running a little bit under budget. A large part has to do with the labor contract that's still outstanding and the fact that the buildings were closed for 70 days. So items such as substitute pay, extra duty pay and all that is significantly low this year because quite simply that as soon as we're not in the buildings. That service payment for the remainder balance is scheduled to be made on March 31st. So that payment will be at the end of this month and then we'll bill for the corresponding reimbursement back for that. Other than that, I'm open to any questions if anybody has any questions regarding the report. In regards to the construction fund, again, as reported last week, we did refund the 2016 bonds on February 18th. They are set to close on March 23rd. The net proceeds back to the district will be roughly $617,000 on March 23rd. The current balance in our construction fund is $286,683. And that has been, you hear Mark, for the wastewater treatment plant project scheduled for the summer over at the middle school. And that is all I have.
I have a question. As soon as the bonds close and we receive the money, do we have to make a motion to be able to get these boilers for these elementary schools? Or will that automatically be handled?
No, that will be handled in a later motion in this board meeting through Schneider Electric. And when that time comes, everything will be presented to the full board in regards to the replacement cost in the timeline and whatnot. So that will be a separate report to the board after they do their audit, energy audit on the three elementary buildings.
Okay, and I have another question. Inasmuch as that the schools have been closed most of the years, I assume then we saved some money as far as not having to use like extra utilities and necessities. Now, do you think next year, when the schools are open full time, that there's going to be a bigger adjustment on the budget?
A bigger adjustment on the budget versus budgeted this year? The answer is probably no because when we did budget for the 2021 school year, we anticipated being in the building 180 days. So the budget figure, the budget figure should be pretty close to what we budgeted for next year. The actual for this year will be less because of the reasons you stated.
Okay, so by the schools being closed, we did save some money then, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Thank you. Under Budget and Finance, approve the board minutes and approve the Treasurers' report for February 2021. I need a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Nancy Bickus Neal, a second.
McLaren.
Second by McLaren. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the general funds for payment in the amount of $694,056.87. I need a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Nancy. Bickus Neal, a second.
Novacek.
Second by Novacek. Any comments or questions? A roll call vote.
Beech?
No.
Bickus Neal?
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
Yes.
Nogi? Nogi?
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't get my mute undone.
Bueller? Bueller? Okay. Where was I at? Novacek?
Yes.
Ulander?
Yes.
Phillipo's?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight one.
Secretaries' report?
Executive sessions were held on the following dates: Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, before the meeting for personnel litigation, and Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, before the meeting for personnel litigation. There are two voting items.
Need a motion to approve the policies?
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander, a second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under professional employees, we have three items. Approve the postings of three teachers, one nurse, one speech therapist for extended school year positions. Employees Samantha Kennel as the school psychologist effective immediately. Per her release from her current position at a salary of $55,000 and benefits per Act 93 contract that affect pending pre-employment drug screening. And approve the retirement of Sharon Spano, HW Good Elementary teacher effective at the end of 2021 school year. I need a motion.
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders, a second.
Novacek.
Second by Novacek. I think we want to thank Sharon Spano for her work as an HW Good Elementary teacher from our board and thank her for all the good work she's done for our kids. And are there any other board comments or questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under classified employees, items one through four. Approve Deborah Richardson to be added to the substitute list of secretaries. Approve the five postings of five personal care assistants extending the school year positions. Approve the retirement of Victoria Green, the personal care assistant, effective 2021 school year. And approve the hiring of Deborah Pills as a special education office secretary pending pre-employment drug screening and clearances with the Ask Me contract. Motion?
Novacek.
Motion by Novacek, second by Harvey. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the following coaches. The head, I'm going to make a motion for Mr. Chunko, Mark Adams, Akeem Moore, Jacob Beestel, Nick Militzer, Dave Robuck, Larry Hickson. Those are all the football coaches. I need a motion to approve all those.
So moved.
Motion by Nogi, second.
Kenders.
Second by Kenders. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the girls soccer coach, the head coach, the assistant coach and the head boys varsity coach, the assistant boys varsity coach, the middle school soccer coach, the middle school girls soccer coach and the middle school girls assistant soccer coach. I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Nogi, second.
Second.
Second by Beech. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Pardon me?
Have a question? Is there a junior varsity soccer coach? For girls?
Can you put those positions on the screen? They're not showing.
I'm not seeing it either.
Yeah, they have the middle school girls soccer coach and the middle school girls assistant soccer coach.
High school?
Oh, the high school? Let's see.
No, correct?
Head varsity girls soccer coach, the assistant girls varsity soccer coach, Larry Appalonia. And Dan Appalonia is the head girls coach and the assistant is Larry. So we have a head coach and an assistant there.
So no junior varsity? For that sport?
Correct.
Boys' middle school.
Is your question, is there one in the contract?
I'm just asking, is there one period?
Is there one in the contract though? I would like to know that.
One second.
If there would, it would be listed. It just wouldn't be filled. It would be on here.
Exactly, exactly. I would just like to know if there's one.
There is, there is no junior varsity soccer coach. There is varsity boys head and assistant boys and there is girls head and assistant girls.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And same with volleyball too, correct?
Correct. Volleyball has a girls head and assistant volleyball. The only ones that have JV, junior varsity coach would be baseball, softball.
I believe that's it.
Yeah, I think that's it. I'm gonna verify, let me verify that. And cheerleading.
Because they have a junior varsity. So baseball is because they travel separate home and away games and the rationale for softball is?
It's in the contract and that's what was posted.
So which ones are we voting on right now? I'm sorry.
Soccer, all the soccer coaches. We had a motion and a second. Do you want a roll call or do you want to do, are you good with voice vote?
I'm sorry, you brought it out on my thing. You said it went down to what?
I said we had a motion and a second, and I asked if you wanted a roll call vote on the soccer coaches.
But did you do all the sports? I didn't hear what you said.
He just did soccer.
Okay, no.
I just did soccer. Okay, all in favor of soccer, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion for the head girls volleyball coach, the assistant varsity volleyball coach. I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Nogi, a second.
Novacek.
Second by Novacek. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve Ally Harvey as the junior varsity softball coach. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Beech, a second.
Ulander.
Second by Ulander. Any board questions?
How many did you say were on the roster for that sport?
I believe 13.
Do these coaches submit rosters at any point in time? To the, did I take it? Maybe?
I believe last Monday was their deadline for, if, I might be wrong, but I think it was last Monday was the deadline for submitting a roster. Is that correct, Janet? Do you know?
I do believe. I think the final rosters have been due. I don't know if it was last Monday, but it's recent.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Could you put me towards the end as far as voting because this is an item here that I I'm lost on. I'm lost. So can I go towards the end as far as voting because?
You can change the voting order.
Okay.
I'm sure Nancy, we could look to intermix the, I think we do that because it's just easier to do it through basically, you know, the alphabet. That's all.
Yeah, you do it alphabetical with the board president going last.
Yep.
Okay, I guess my only comment is because I'm not really involved with a lot of this athletics and what's going on here. I'm a little bit at a loss for all of this that, you know, so, you know, I guess I'm just going to have to fly blind here.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Beech?
Yes.
Bickus Neal?
Yes.
Harvey, I'm abstaining. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
No.
Nogi?
No.
Novacek?
No.
Ulander?
Yes.
Phillipo's?
Yes.
Five, four, well, I'm staying, five, four, carry. Motion carries.
Five, three, one.
Five, three, one, yeah, sorry.
Approve Alana Smith as a varsity volunteer softball coach. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Beech, second.
Novacek.
Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve Andy Bergman as a middle school softball volunteer. I should have grouped those together. I'm sorry. Motion?
Kenders.
Motion by Kenders, a second.
Second.
Second by Nogi. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve Henry Dyson as the middle school track volunteer. I need a motion.
Kenders.
Harvey.
Motion by Kenders, second by Harvey. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items five through eight. Approve extended season pay for two rounds for the following coaches, Eric Bush and Matthew Maltonis. Approve Kyla Yensik as the high school spring play music volunteer and accept the resignation of Tyler Dillinger as the junior varsity baseball coach and approve Tyler as the baseball volunteer. I need a motion.
Ulander.
Motion by Ulander, second.
Nogi.
Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under District Operations, I need to approve items one through five. I'm not going to read them all, but I need a motion there.
Are you doing items six to Jared or are you doing that separate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Items one through six. I didn't see that. Sorry. And item six was the motion to approve the resolution calling for charter school funding reform. Sorry about that.
I think you had a motion from Nancy Bickus Neal. I think I interrupted.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Motion by Nancy Bickus Neal, a second.
Harvey.
Second by Harvey. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. WIU seven board report. Mr. Kenders?
No report.
CWCTC, Nancy Bickus Neal?
Yeah, I have something to report. I found it very interesting, especially to the board members who are really involved in the athletics. You can actually get students from the CWCTC to go and to work at the school district. If you need maybe something done with the fields, maybe with locker rooms, put in a request. The instructor and the students will come up. They've refurbished locker rooms in Greensburg-Salem. You know, they will bring heavy equipment. So if you want to have some projects done and we don't have the money in the budget and you'd like the students to do some hands-on learning, just let me know and I will put in a request or Dr. Sarden could put in a request for us to have students up here working on projects for the school district.
That's good to hear. Nancy, on a side note, I can say that several years ago, there was a school district, I believe in Beaver County, that installed a new field house and used primarily their Vo-Tech students to do the work. They had, you know, the masonry guys laying block. They had HVAC guys. They had the electrical guys. Yes, it took an extended period of time to get it done as opposed to bringing in a contracting crew. But it worked as a project for all of those students and it saved the school district a ton of money. I don't know how far we can go with this and maybe, you know, if we want to look at it in the future. I'm sure the solicitor can tell us what boundaries we might run up against with the union contesting using these guys as work. But I mean, obviously, I think it's something to look at and something to consider for some of the, especially some of the smaller projects maybe in our school district that we want to have done and try to save a few bucks plus get these kids to projects that they need to graduate.
Well, Mr. Lucia, who's the director down there, said they're even going to be using heavier equipment. Now, it's going to cost the Vo-Tech a little bit money, more money in their insurance. But I think in the long run, they feel that this is very good training and job experience for the students down there. So even maybe dealing with a little bit heavier equipment, you know, you could have the job done.
Agreed. Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
PSBA, PSBA reports, Sue.
The only thing is there's another one of the virtual advocacy days coming up. I believe it's March 22nd. I think that's where the PSBA sets up meetings with legislators and it's like a Zoom, a Zoom thing you can register and then log on to and bring up any concerns or anything with your legislators. And I also received an email from the PSBA about a service they offer to review our policies and, you know, our policy manual and maybe provide guidance on any policies, maybe that need updated or need revised or maybe just deleted or anything like that. I have to read the email again. I'm not sure if there was a fee associated with that, but it might have been one of those things where they can do some of it, you know, for no cost since we, you know, participate with them. But then there might be an additional cost if we go further into it, but I can read that email a little bit more. And if anyone thinks that's something we might want to do, I can look into reaching out to that person and seeing what we need to do.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
That's great, Sue. Especially if there's no cost to the district, I think it'd be great to have it done.
Yeah, I'll double check. I think there might be.
There is a cost. You guys did that here probably right before I came about 11 years ago. PSBA did a full policy review. We use PSBA right now for our policies and that's where we get our updates according to laws and stuff. But I believe the full policy review, and that was back then, was somewhere around $1,200. So. But they may have changed their structure, what have you. I'm not sure. I didn't, Sue, I got that email too.
Okay. Yeah, I think it said something about a fee, but I don't believe it did indicate what the fee would be. And I didn't know if, maybe there was, you know, some parts of it they just do and then if you, you know, it's kind of like they get you to do it because it's free and then they get you in there and you end up paying more because you want more done.
Yeah, we use them. So yeah, I'll check it out.
All right.
Thank you, Sue. Under old business, or I'm sorry, committee reports. Does anybody have anything under committee reports? Under old business. Under new business, I do have one item before we go into the discussion of the zoning hearing. I need a motion to authorize Mr. Mata to use the appraiser company of Coil, Lynch and Company for a new appraisal for the Tenaska project at a cost of $50,000. I need a board motion.
Novacek.
Motion by Novacek, a second.
Nogi.
Second by Nogi. Any board questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of zoning hearings that occurred in Swickley Township on February 25th, 2021.
I'd like to make that a motion, please, that we authorize the superintendent to set a letter to Swickley Township opposing the transfer of the liquor license.
Hey, I need a board second.
Second.
Any board questions?
I'd just like to make a comment on this. The, under, I think the LCB law, there has to be a distance. there has to be a distance of about three hundred feet between, um, the property where the liquor license is and the school. And I think, um, this is very, very, very close. Um, I don't know. Dr. Sarden, did, did you get an actual reading on how many feet?
So we, we did a Google map search and we did our footage, um, and I don't know what the laws are as far as the LCB go, but we are about a hundred and sixteen feet from the end of the property to our playground. From their front door to our playground, it's about two fifty, and from their front door to our front of our building itself is about four hundred feet. So I guess it would depend on what the, um, LCB laws are with regard to playgrounds and schools, and that's an estimate based off of Google Maps. Um, but it seems to me that if it is that, then it would fall within those guidelines. So if those are the guidelines, I'm not sure that they would approve it or not. I can't answer that.
Okay. I just want to make a comment. Um, I think we're here as the Board of Education uh, to protect the most vulnerable children in, in our school district. These are little children there that are, you know, six, seven, eight years old that are playing on playgrounds. Um, I don't see any purpose that we need to have, uh, uh, an establishment that is selling liquor so close to where little kids are on sliding boards. Uh, we are here to protect these small children. And if we can't protect them, I don't know what our purpose is on this board. So that's my only comment.
Does anyone have any data that says that, like, these, a location like this increases anything? Illegal activity, drunk driving, incidents in the school?
Well, you know what happens.
Are we just going by an assumption?
No, well, we, they've talked to people in the athletics over there, and what happens is maybe a lot of times they'll go and they'll take their, their children to play on the fields there, and then the parents might go over there and have a couple beers and, uh, while their kids are playing sports and then they come back. And all you need to do is to have one person, one person, get intoxicated and hit one of those kids. And, and, you know, I could never forgive myself to, to support something like this. We're here to protect these children. There's a lot of bars there in, in Harmony. Uh, if somebody wants to go and, you know, to have a drink or have something to eat, it's just a blo- you know, a couple blocks away, go, go down there. Why go and take a chance? You got a place where kids eat ice cream, you have a place where small kids play on fields, and now you want to go and be able to put, uh, a liquor establishment so close to all these children? I don't understand that.
I don't want to do it. Uh, Parmar Oil does, and they own the building, and I don't understand how, uh, we feel we have the right to tell them to do something legally they're allowed to do. That's what I don't understand.
We have the right to protect our children in this school district. That's what our right is.
Well, what I'm sa- what I, my position is, is that if there's data showing that these increase things and things happen, then okay, but to just willy-nilly do this based on your assumption that something's gonna happen i- is, is not, to me, it's not the American way. I mean, that's just plain and simple.
Well, Ken, I agree with you on the, on the, you know, willy-nilly thing, but I also, you know, put into perspective that for the safety of kids, you know, you're not allowed to have a gas well within so many feet of a school building and stuff like that. So there's a lot of different things that are hypothetical that come into the, to play for protecting the, you know, the kids.
Well, yeah, because there's data that an emergency happens at a gas well, that it could put methane into the air and it could kill the children in the school, that there's evidence of that. That's what, uh, that's why that is in place. It's not just somebody just said, oh, we shouldn't let them close to a school.
It's a business in our community that's looking to expand their business. I mean, there are pros and cons, but for us just to dictate to them if they can't expand their business, I mean.
Yeah, but you're also gonna be taking, uh, business away from all the bars and all the restaurants that are there on Main Street. That's gonna hurt them. All you're doing is encouraging more drinking. And, you know, um, we go and we try to teach our children in this school district and we have programs for drug and alcohol. And, uh, you know, why, why are we having these programs if we can't go and try to teach our children to try to?
Everybody that's gonna go into this place is, is doing drugs and is an alcoholic? I mean, that's a little extreme here.
But all you have to do is have one person, one person. That's all you have to do.
That's with anything. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and fight with you, but, I mean, this, what you're saying is a bit extreme. I mean, yeah, it goes both ways, but to dictate who and who cannot have a business in the Oak School District is, is.
They have a business there. I mean, they're, they're still selling gas. It's not like you're taking them out of business. You're just preventing them to, uh, to be able to sell alcohol, that's all.
I would imagine, so one of the things we talked about was, Swickley Township is actually having a, another hearing on March seventeenth. At that hearing, they will make a determination whether or not they pass a resolution, um, with regard to this situation. And then from there, I think whether or not they pass the resolution, like we said last week, it would go, um, they could appeal at the Common Pleas Court if they don't pass the resolution.
How much pull does our resolution have towards that?
What I, what I was told, and Gary might be able to speak to this, that depending on if there's no public comment to the township, when it goes to Common Pleas Court, if nobody from the community is opposed to it, they, you know, they take that into consideration. The last step is what Nancy had mentioned a little bit earlier. After it goes through that process, then at the end is when the Liquor Control Board makes the termination on amount of feet from a playground and a school, and there are guidelines surrounding, um, playgrounds and schools within that type of establishment, whether they're just selling out of beer coolers or whether they're actually drinking on property. Those, those guidelines are established by the LCB, um, and then they would make a final determination on that permit.
But we don't actually know what those guidelines are. We don't know how many feet it is or what.
I believe it's five hundred, from what I found, but again, Gary can maybe answer this, I believe it's five hundred feet from a school.
What I would ask, what I think then may be something that it, if the board would like to, to just indicate that they would like the, um, municipality to follow all rules and regulations in accordance with the Liquor Control Board. So you're not, you're not willing to leave them do some type of modification to lessen that distance. You want them to keep it as, as the rule is. That could be at the, some middle ground from the discussions that just took place.
I agree with that.
Gary, do you want to just draft that letter if this motion passes to send over?
That'll be fine.
Great. I can tell you that the, in, in discussions with the PTOs, and even I think there are letters coming in from our PTOs as well as from, um, the Athletic Association over at Bruno Field as well. I think there's some parents sending letters, is my understanding.
So, Mr. Mata, I guess we need, if, we either need a second on Nancy Bickus Neal's or?
I believe there was, I believe that Mr. Nogi seconded that.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd seconded it to open for questions.
Okay. So basically, Gary, before we do a vote there, I take it the letter isn't gonna be that we oppose it or it's gonna be?
I don't know. No, the motion and second was to oppose it. I was saying that maybe if the board was not acceptable of that, that we could do something, asking them to make sure that they, you know, follow the leather of the law, so to speak. But right now, we have a motion saying to a, to oppose it. And that is what is before the board for consideration at this time.
Okay.
So the board would have the ability to amend that motion if they chose?
Well, the, the people that made and seconded, they would have to vote it down.
Yeah.
And then, then, then follow up with another motion if they saw fit or take no action.
I, I just want to ask another question, too. I mean, right up near the high school, there is a, uh, I think it's a beauty shop right on the one corner. Uh, would the board feel, would the board feel comfortable if a bar was, uh, uh, came in right across from the high school on that one corner? I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't understand why, you know, we can't be concerned about these children.
I don't think we voted on it yet, Nancy.
Well, I know, but I'm just adding that, that let's, let's also look that you can also have a bar right up near the high school.
I wouldn't think that's a real prime location for one, but I could be wrong.
Well, you never know. Somebody could go and.
And I'm not saying, and I don't appreciate the fact, just because I'm voting one way, that I don't have the safety and welfare of our children in our district at hand.
And I doubt that a bar could be placed there because Swickley Township has zoning for, for certain things. So I doubt if a bar could be put in there, but I do see, I do see your point there. I, I don't know. Maybe we're better off, I'm not saying sticking our nose into this thing, but maybe we're better off, and I'm not saying pushing it over to Swickley Township, but, you know, if they have to follow all the Swickley Township municipal guidelines to follow that, then basically they wouldn't be permitted to be in there anyway. Isn't that what you're saying, Mr. Mata? Basically, at that point, the Liquor Control Board would take a look at the rules and the guidelines.
That's correct.
And, um, it's not that we oppose it, we're for it or against it. We're just recommending Swickley Township follow all the guidelines, you know, and if the guidelines say that this place is within three hundred feet, then, then at that point, Swickley Township has to oppose it and the Liquor Control Board would not grant that, uh, particular business, that license.
But I think what it does is, is if you do have the letter, it does give, uh, if it does go to court, it does give a little bit more weight to the objection of this as opposed to not anyone in the community caring. Uh, if it does end up going to court, that, you know, there is a li- liquor license or there isn't a liquor license. That's, you know, it's like speak now or forever hold your peace.
So Jared, you have a motion and a second. Are you just gonna do a roll call on this?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call on it.
So we're opposing the transfer, right? Is that what the motion is?
No, I think this, yeah, this is.
Current motion is, is to send the leser, letter opposing, uh, the, the permitted use.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm on mute. I was, okay, I'm good. Um, I, I had just asked, we're, the letter, we're sending a letter to Swickley Township, is that correct? If this passes, that's where we go. Okay, I just wanted to include that. Okay, Beach?
No.
Bickus Neal?
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Kenders?
Yes.
McLaren?
No.
Nogi?
Yes.
Navatchek?
Yes.
Ulander?
No.
Philopos?
Yes.
I'm trying to count.
Six, three.
Six, three. Motion carries.
The motion passes six, three for the letter opposing. So I will draft something, Gary. I will send, or do you want to draft something, Gary? You want me to draft it?
You can. You could draft this, Janet, and I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Solicitor's report?
I have no report for a public session this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything under citizens' comments?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, I need a motion for German, and the time is eight twenty-five.
Motion?
Motion by Nancy Bickus Neal, a second.
Navatchek.
Second by Navatchek. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Good night and be safe, everyone.
Good night.
Good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.